The meeting to order at 5:29. Alright, we're up, let's go. Um, per RSA 18974, um, we are going to open up the meeting for public input. If there's any public input, just let us know. And we'll address it. Alright, uh, do we have any announcements? Yeah? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Alright. So, what do we got?
This is the financials. So, in your board pack, we sent you the financials. And we have remaining budget expense of the last meeting of ninety-two thousand two forty-six. We have additional spend or encumbrance this month of one hundred and sixteen nine oh one, which puts you into deficit position of twenty-four six fifty-four. Now, this is prior to trust reimbursement that we have already known about for the roof and the safety project. Which would put us at a projected remaining of fifty-nine one oh nine. Now, this hundred and sixteen in the month was many things. So, we had an employee increase their health benefits. We had to adjust the utility encumbrances based on the actual invoices that we were receiving. We had to encumber some additional services for child, for children. And we had to increase the food service loss as we looked at that projection. And it looks like it's going to be a little higher than we expected. Does anyone have any questions?
I do not, you guys have any?
Um, I just had a question about the position filled under the AIDS line. So, is that a paraposition that was filled?
There was a paraposition.
Oh, we did fill a paraposition. Just within this past month, or?
Just in the last couple of weeks, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, Molly did want you guys to know that we had received additional unanticipated revenue over what we have expected for the special education. And so, that will increase, that will, you can't use it, but it will help your fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, decrease our balance?
No.
It will increase our balance.
Because it's additional revenue that you weren't expecting to receive.
We're gonna have a, after we do the trust and everything, we're gonna have a positive fund balance.
Correct, okay, right. I was just, I was flipping it in my head. Right, we should be in the positive, not the negative. Okay, that's what we have.
What was that amount?
Um, I think she has down here, so it looks like additional special ed paid for thirty-three one ninety-eight.
It's right here.
Oh, yep, I see it, thank you.
Um, what is the E-rate?
So, E-rate is, uh, we participate in what they call an E-rate plan. So, when we use phone services or internet services or do certain technology purchases, they will either give us discounts on those services or, or equipment, or they will provide at the end of the year a, a payment.
Okay.
Or a reimbursement type thing. So, that's what this E-rate is.
Okay. You guys have any other questions?
Um, I do not right now.
I don't either.
Okay. Alright, approval of minutes.
So, in the minutes, I have an edit under Public Input. It says Audience Member, and it said unidentified, and that's Dr. Branting. And then again, there's another unidentified, that's Dr. Branting. And then also in the approval of minutes from last month, in the edits, Dr. Branton needs to be changed to Dr. Branting. And that was all I saw, so it was all about Dr. Branting today.
Did you get that last one? Stop.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, public and non-public, from February thirteenth, as amended.
All second. On favor? Alright.
Unless you guys had anything else, sorry. Jumped ahead there.
Thank you. So, we have, I just want to give our last plug for our school performance. It is next week, twenty-second of March. Our students and staff will be presenting Lion King Kids, seven PM here in our multipurpose room on Thursday, the twenty-second, and the eleven AM performance on Saturday, March twenty-third. Our enrollment numbers for this, uh, later this month, uh, remain the same, nineteen in kindergarten, twenty-three in first and second grade, eleven in third grade, twenty-one, I'm sorry, eleven in third grade, twenty-one in fourth grade, eighteen in fifth grade, for a total of one fifteen. Tomorrow, all of our staff, paraprofessionals and teaching staff, will be starting the day at the high school for our March In Service Day. We will be spending the morning, uh, learning from each other. We have, uh, I don't know, a number of sessions set up.
Forty.
Forty.
It's like forty.
Set up where staff from the SAU, experts in their field are, uh, either presenting or running workshops for their colleagues. Uh, we have, um, a handful of teachers here. Our teachers that have presented twice on the Science of Reading will be the presenters for two sessions tomorrow. Mr. Stevens, Mrs. Sousa, Mrs. Schuster, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Jablonsky will be presenting tomorrow. And, um, as you know, they had two wonderful presentations of the board, and they kind of combined those, um, to lead their colleagues in, uh, the Science of Reading. So, we're really, uh, excited about that. I also, it's not on here, but I wanted to thank Andy for three wonderful years. Appreciate your support, uh, for our students and our staff, and your commitment, uh, to everyone in our building. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there any way we can see what the professional learning opportunities are, like what they're being offered, as a way to just see, like, what the teachers are, are learning and what they're, what they're building?
Yeah, there's a, um, program that will be handed out tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll just snatch that, snatch a copy, and then send it to you.
Yeah, perfect. I just, I'm curious as to, like, what the?
What all the sessions are.
What the sessions are and what's being offered, and I'm assuming they got to choose which sessions they wanted to go to?
There's two of them they chose from, and they range from things like Science of Reading and Academics through Artificial Intelligence, Special Education, or Started Practices.
MTSS, competency-based grading, scoring rubrics, grading, like, it runs the game.
Is it K-12?
K-12, yeah.
Yeah, is it, do you have electronically that you could download and send to the board? That would be great.
Thank you.
Alright.
So, you're, did the play normally run on a Friday, too? Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
It's, it's just Friday and Saturday this year.
Okay, so it changed, yeah?
Thursday and Saturday.
Thursday and Saturday?
Friday, Saturday.
Oh, that's Friday?
Yep. Uh, Thursday's the school performance at one, one PM for the students, and then the Friday and Saturday performances.
Okay, I think that's what threw me off, yeah. So, I think you said Thursday at first, I missed that.
Yes. Sorry, scared me there.
It's okay.
Alright, um, anything else?
Uh, nope.
That's it. Yeah. Alright, uh, we'll get into community assignment, Superintendent Evaluation. There wasn't anything from what we sent last time, which was what we sent out, but, um, there is, at four o'clock on Thursday, there is a meeting. So, it's probably worthwhile to decide today who wants to take over that.
What's that date?
It is fourteenth.
Is that the, is that the community meeting that Dr. Asbell's having?
No, I think that's the, is that the committee?
That's the committee meeting?
Superintendent Evaluation.
Yeah, so it's, it's private.
Okay.
It's not public.
But they are, she is doing?
She has done a lot of those.
Public ones, yes, okay.
Yep, she's done, yeah.
For the Vision Summit, is that the deadline to participate, to sign up for the Vision Summit? Is that what you mean?
Right, she was hav, there was a invite to community members to go to, uh, I'll say, round two.
Anyone can come to the Vision Summit.
Summit, right.
Okay.
That's, that's later in the month.
That is, I want to say the twenty-seventh.
I was just getting confused with, like, this is just specifically for the committee.
It's a Superintendent Evaluation.
Committee.
Yep.
Twenty-six, yep, the twenty-six is the, the Vision Summit.
Yeah, Allison Higgins is, uh...
This is for members of each school board that is on the Superintendent's Evaluation. Need to go over the process that was finalized, and then her goals and what data you'd like to see.
So, is there one of you that would like to take that over?
So, I'm gonna, I will say this, um, I am willing to take it over if I get rid of other things, right? Like, it's a balance. I can't, I, to add a, a third committee on top of?
So, yeah, so, your, at your next meeting, you guys will discuss committees.
Yeah.
Like, like your first meeting, right? Remember, anyone went over that? So, um, that'd be a good time to delegate from there.
Okay, so, I, I don't know that I can go Thursday.
Okay.
Is that okay?
It's fine, it's just that, that's when the next meeting is.
And where is it?
It is at the SAU office. They normally have a web link as well.
Oh, okay.
You can request that. Heather, HR Director?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Heather will.
She'll be in charge of that, and if, I mean, if she can't go, Tiffany, do you want to, do, can you go on Thursday, and then after you guys meet, we can finalize?
If it's a Zoom link, that's a much higher percentage that I can.
Yeah, they always have Zoom link. Allison Higgins is the one that runs it.
Oh, she's on Wellness.
Okay, so, if, if you email her, you'll be able to get the link as well.
She's Brentwood, right?
Yes, she's Brentwood.
Yeah, just let me know, um, my planner's at home, but I don't think I have anything on Thursday afternoon, so I can make it, probably if you can't. And then we can reconvene next month and decide what we want to do, because what committees are you on, you're on the Wellness? And then?
We have engagement here, right?
Engagement, okay.
For here, right? Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind doing it, it's, it's just organizing life.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, I just want to make sure I know for next month what we are going to have. Alright, so just email me if you can't make it.
Alright, um, let me knock out Safety and Security, because I'm just gonna pass it on to Renee, because I got stuck at work for that.
Oh, um, Safety and Security, we finalized our training for April third, which is, um, area training on reunification and crisis management. Met some new first responders. All first responders have a access key to all of our school buildings now. That has been something we've been working towards. So, just like mine, it works for all school buildings. So, if there was a, a crisis in East Kingston needed to go to Stratum or help out, there's a, there's a swipe key so they could get into any buildings. We reviewed the safety grants, which schools got which ones. The only schools that really got one was Stratum and SST, got the safety grant this year, because they didn't get it last year, but there's still an opportunity to reapply next year. And that's really what we went over, went over. There was conversations about classroom keys in the first responders' vehicles, um, but there's, we're just not sure how that's going to roll out, or how to do that yet, so that's not an issue, but the, um, Safety and Security or police officers having access to all our school buildings, using our key card system that can be turned on and off at any minute, on Rusty's phone or anywhere, so that's all what we talked about, and then the training on April third.
And that's all staff?
No, that is, um, the crisis management training is staff from each building, I think you're on it.
Yep.
Usually the principals, and then a counselor or someone who isn't a classroom teacher that would be called up if there was a crisis in one of the schools surrounding this area. And so, we are training with Dover, with Oyster, we're training with a handful of surrounding schools, so if we have to go to their school and respond to something that happened at their school, we would, they had to come here. It would, it would be here. So, it's PD in the morning and the afternoon is just training and, like, live tra, like, practice drills and stuff like that. So, yeah, it's, it's a new, we used to just have our own buildings respond to other buildings if there was a crisis, and then, um, rethinking that, we partnered, Dr. Asbell partnered with other superintendents in this state and the surrounding areas, and said, why don't you come to my school if something happens, and I'll come to your school if something happens? Opposed to my middle school teachers going to an elementary school that they might have a connection to, or my, or my high school teachers going to the middle school when they might have a connection to. So, it's allowing people a little bit further along. And there's retraining and psychological first aid, which all, I mean, we have about forty-eight members of SAU that has gone to a three-day training on psychological first aid, but there'd be a refresher of that in the morning. And then it's just crisis team manning, man, management, it's operations, incident command, who's running communications, how do you communicate, that sort of thing. So, that was a big part of the, giving an overview. First responders are joining us, area first responders are joining us and everything, so it would be.
Even from the other sending towns?
Yep, yep, everyone's, they get, they get the.
Cooperating, I should say cooperating towns?
Yeah, cooperating towns, get the, decide.
Great.
Yep, who they're gonna bring. That's really what the Safety and Security meeting was about.
Yeah, having been through a situation with, um, one of my kiddos where there was a false alarm at CMS and everyone sort of scattered, um, I think it's going to be a good thing.
Yeah.
To have other people there when you're trying to get your kids dismissed, and there's could be kids that are a little, you know, nervous about what happened, and they might need some help at that moment.
Exactly, exactly. And that it's people, fresh eyes come, they've got their manuals, their books, they're trained for it, they know, they know what we need to hand them when they show up, and then they know how to use it to help the chaos, because it is really organized chaos. If something, I mean, it's organized chaos, and something like that happens, and kids are upset. So, it's just trying to organize that a little bit more.
So, then, you're saying that East Kingston PD has, and first responders, like fire department, they have key cards to get into our building, and it's only activated when there's an incident? Or is it kind of live?
Their key cards are live.
They're live.
Okay, and so, it's only our area PD and fire department that have keys, not like other towns?
Nope, it's first, it's first, it's every, first responders, sheriff, and state troopers. So, your local PD, some, some assigned sheriff deputies, um, I think it's the sergeant in Troop A for the state troopers. Like, not everyone has a key, but there are keys of it, I should say that. It's not like there's thirty thousand keys out there, but each police department has an SAU key card that gets them into an SAU building when needed, and they are live.
Okay.
Um, but yes, it is a state, there's a state trooper, there's, um, fire and rescue had them. Sheriff departments that are all getting the training have, have that, so if they needed to respond to, um, if Brandon activated a lockdown or an active shooter, they would get the call and the keys, they would have keys to get in, so there's no one having to open the door for them. There's no calling Rusty saying, can you unlock the doors?
Okay.
It's, and that was, came out of FBI reports from previous shootings that law enforcement couldn't get in to the school. They had to find a principal to unlock a door, which is not what we want. We want the principal and the students and the staff leaving, and the police having to get in the building if they need to get in.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted, um, see what the plan was.
My understanding is that they're, when you go through incident commands, that they're not giving some random shout, you know, random shout.
Right.
It's the one who's down the street, right? It's the one that's going to align best and most appropriate.
Usually supervisors.
I just didn't know if, like, Stratum PD had, you know, and like Kensington PD, like, I just.
So, like, in theory, the chief in Stratum's key card opens any building in SAU sixteen. So, just like my key card opens any building, so it's that piece. It can be shut off at any time by a click of a button, but it is, they have keys that access any of our buildings.
Okay.
And it's just those keys, it's not, you know, Brandon's keys doesn't open every building, but this, certain keys with certain numbers open all buildings.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep. Yes, thank you.
Alright, any other questions?
I'm good.
Alright, policy?
Uh, no policies for March. Yay.
That's meeting.
So, uh, yeah.
There's a lot coming in April.
I was just like, I feel like I should be doing something to prepare for this meeting. Yep, so, next month.
Um, Wellness is, is Thursday, um, March fourteenth, um, which I said in our last meeting that they switched, um, so I cannot, uh, attend. I'm gonna try to be on the Zoom link, but I'll try to be on the other one, too. I have a thing that I'm actually running for that day for the state of New Hampshire, so, um, I can't be three of me. So, I'll do my best.
Alright.
No updates for that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What does the Wellness Committee do?
So, they look at policy. Right now, they're looking at policy for, um, fitness and wellness, and they're looking at the different state regulations, um, and how much kids should be, when should they be going outside, what's the temperature, is it feels like? They talk about time, about movement, how much moving time they have in physical activity versus how much seat time. They're using, and I can look it up for you, I can't remember, they, I can't remember the actual, they're using a, um, national standards, uh, Wellness Committee protocols that have come out, um, and there's been some great conversation, but they, when I joined, um, seven months ago, eight months ago, they were, they were halfway through this revision, and so they're, they need to be done in June. So, my next follow-up to this, I'm, I'm hoping to be able to have, like, a, some real strong bullet points as to what was changed or what was revised for, for us. You're welcome.
Go.
I have no updates for goal number one, other than, um, we're probably gonna be starting some state testing.
Uh, we just started, um, the state moved writing up, uh, just this year.
Yeah.
The reason is, they, they wanted to hand score the SAS writing assessments.
Oh, okay.
Um, to kind of recalibrate where students are. Next year, they anticipate going back to, to more of the timeframe and have it done electronically. So, so, writing, uh, we are in the process, they gave us two weeks, uh, last week and this week to complete the writing assessments. And then our, our reading, math, and, um, and science will be end of April and early May.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I thought that was weird, because the middle school did their writing portion, too, and then May it's going to be the math, so.
Yeah.
Wow, hand calibrating.
Got anything to add for yours?
Um, so, uh, it's, it's more of the same, there hasn't been a ton of movement. Brendan and I will be meeting with the Director of SST next week, um, to kind of follow up with her conversation with the SST teachers, um, and where they, you know, what their schedules look like and their interest in joining the community park project with us. I did email the grant people to ask, like, where we were in the process, or if we're not in the running, could you let us know so we can move on with our lives? Or if we are getting something, uh, you know? Where are we in the process? Right, so, I did, did send that email out. I am, I am hoping to, I don't, I don't have it written down, when's our next community engagement meeting? Is it May, April?
I don't remember what it is.
Yeah, I don't either. It's next week, though. My hope is when we meet again, uh, to actually look at, um, building out a proposed draft of a timeline as to when landscaping and cutting things down and, uh, versus, you know, putting the walking curriculum in. I think a timeline would help us stay in each small project at a time versus looking at it through a very large lens. I also would like to recruit a few teachers, um, and community members to start helping design what those thirteen stations might look like, or what might we be interested as a community? Like, could one be the, you know, New Hampshire history? Could one be a painting station or a photography station? Could one be a biomedical station, or, you know, the human body? So, I'm, I'm looking at different places. I really would like the community, um, and a team of teachers with the Community Engagement Committee to work together on building those thirteen stations, and I'm using the word thirteen, I don't know if it will be thirteen, but, um, I do think we need to come up with a proposed timeline so that it's chunked out in a much more strategic feeling like we're accomplishing something every, every time we come to the meeting.
I don't know if we set a date until after we heard from the grant, if I remember our last conversation.
Yeah, okay.
So, when we meet with Pam next week, maybe we can?
We'll figure out.
Set a date after that meeting at least?
Sure, yeah, and get something out there.
Yeah.
Um, I also wanted to, um, when we meet, I will be proposing a few other ideas for community engagement. I don't know if they'll take any, take any, uh, no, take any weight, but, um, I was thinking about getting, um, doing an Earth Day or during April, having a, a recycle space. I've been in contact with, um, a vendor who can get us a dumpster, dumpster and pay for scrap meddling, electronics, um, things that people might want to get rid of in their household, and they would give us a pretty large percentage back. People would get paid for their, you know, you have to go to the dump, and you have to dump a TV, it's twenty-five dollars, thirty dollars to do that. They would take all of this, and they would give us a percentage back, um, as a fundraiser. So, that, that was one of the ideas. The other idea Andy said he'd already helped me with, and that's a turkey trot.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, um, I'd like to do some type of fun run, um, in the fall.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'll bring those up next time we meet, that community engagement.
Alright, um, mine, we're doing the roof this summer?
Uh, nope, uh, April break.
April break?
Yep, they were here, not too long ago, just to do, uh, one more walk-through before, and with the weather, there's gonna be no snow on the roof, so we're looking pretty good.
Excellent. Alright, um, new business, anything? Okay. Old business?
Pickleball.
Pickleball. So, oop, um, we talked about pickleball last time, and we talked about one court, uh, they're coming back and asking if they can do two courts kind of this way. I think it's far enough out of the way of, uh, um, the inlet here from the road to have it that way, because that was one of the requirements, is we didn't want to block that. And that's kind of what they're doing. I was out with Rob, uh, Rob, Karen, Karun, um, before the meeting today, um, looking at it, make sure it's flat enough for him and so forth, but, do you have any?
Yeah, um, after we spoke last week, uh, just a couple of things, we have a lot of teenagers playing basketball.
Yep.
So, uh, they're here, uh, you know, I mean, they've been here the last couple of weeks with the, with the warmer weather. So, the concerns I have are, uh, some of our older folk and some of our teenagers trying to share the same space.
Okay.
And what that's going to look like. And just with the added courts, you know, I, I would, I would highly recommend the town purchase cones and kind of put cones out.
Okay.
You know, when they, when they do have, uh, a pickleball setup.
Yeah, that is absolutely doable.
And you, I think it was you, uh, or was it, um?
Andrew.
Andrew, uh, that, that, uh, talked about getting some kind of, you know, net or fencing to separate the courts?
Yep.
So balls aren't flying over there.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna deal with that part.
Um, and then, just thinking back to previous conversations, the town's gonna purchase another shed? Is that still the plan to store everything?
They're either gonna use another shed or try to use a soccer one. I am going to recommend they just get a new one for maybe both.
Yeah.
Um, but it'd be up there with the soccer thing.
Okay.
So.
Can, Andy, can you just walk me through, I know it was, it was my concern before, um, concern's a strong word, I just, when those courts are available, how will people be able to? when those courts are available, how will people be able to reserve them? When is it like appropriate to be using them? Will it be appropriate for people to be using them, like during recess?
No, not in the
Right, like school, so summer is really the time that it's going to be the, I guess, the most active.
Yeah.
And is there a process by which people can reserve them?
Yeah, so, well, it's actually going to, it sounds like they're gonna try and do a um almost like a league.
Oh, okay.
Um and then have them reserved. There's actually gonna be information tomorrow about voting about, so there's still
Okay.
They're they're gonna have like a survey and try to get an idea of what people want out of this.
Right, so like our heaviest traffic is between eight AM and eleven AM.
And in keep mind, there's also gonna be two courts at the library.
Oh.
As well.
I missed that.
So um
So why are we adding so many courts then?
Uh there's a lot of demand.
Yeah, I mean, looking at this design.
So one one thing.
At the last voting, I collected names.
Yes.
We got four sheets of names.
Yeah.
People who were interested.
Really interested.
Those are just the people who went to the polls.
Yeah, yeah, there's there's lots of interest. The technical about how they're gonna be playing on the two courts and might run into each other. That's for the rec guys and everything to figure out.
Yeah, like, well, see, I'm fine, like, I'm not really concerned about that, actually. I'm more concerned about like what Brandon brought up, because when I first heard about this, I didn't know that the pickleball court would um encroach on the basketball court.
It's not gonna go on the basketball court.
It's gonna be just feet between the the sideline and the sideline of the
Yeah, and and there will be
It's gonna be what?
So it doesn't go on to the basketball court. So basketball court ends there.
Okay, so the, okay, all right, I was looking at this wrong.
Yeah.
I'm thinking the basketball court is here.
Yeah, I know. So this this is the basketball court, and then this line here is basically the delineation of where the um inlet, I'm sorry, what's the right word for that?
Entrance.
Entrance, thank you. For the the road is, because that was something that we had discussed before, we didn't want the court going out into the entrance.
Okay, yep. Okay, so the basketball court is, you can still play basketball court?
Yeah, I mean
Basketball and have two pickleball courts?
Yes, there will be
Like how close? Is that a couple?
It's close.
Yeah, it's close. So so the one thing that's gonna happen is there'll be a schedule for the pickleball. And and when they will be playing on this, um and we're gonna have to work around. It's a recreational area for both, so.
The I I think the biggest challenge, I, the town reached out to me a few weeks ago to get kind of the off-limits times, which I gave them. The biggest challenge, I think, is going to be trying to balance the pickleball with softball.
Yep.
Right, because we we don't get the schedules for those, it's it's, you know, between practices and games. That whole parking lot is packed. Maybe they park up here.
And and that's that's been discussed, so like Brian Wall really has a handle on that, and he's communicating with Andrew Falcino about schedule so far to associate with that. So.
I mean, it's great. I'm 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 going to say I'm absolutely thrilled that it's actually going in the library. I think that's a wonderful place, like that's ideal.
Yeah.
Right? I I just, I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about kiddos who come and just play at their school. Families that come and bring their kids to just play, right? The kids that are coming to play basketball. I don't want that to go away, because I do feel it's 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 a space where, you know, for a half an hour, families can go kill time, they go to, they go to the school playground. Or whatever. Um and I don't want it, and it goes for the flip, the people who are playing pickleball who have signed up, now they have families coming in with dogs or whatever. Right, where's the balance there between, well, I've signed up, and this is what I, that's why the library, I think, is a great I didn't know that was happening, that's fantastic.
The library's gonna be the main.
The main one?
Yeah. And then this will be used.
One and two?
Yeah, this will be used as, you know, like the fill in the time when we need and so forth.
And was there discussion about why why are we adding one? Just because, and is it because of the interest, like we have enough people that are, we we could use four courts?
Yeah, the the, they expect that we'll have enough interest to be using four courts at times.
I've never played pickleball or actually seen it in action, so could you put like a fence here, or like how close is, it's like a foot? I'm just thinking, you know, like the kiddos that play basketball on this road, they're here almost every day.
Every day.
Every day. And especially in the summer, like I can hear them out here at like one o'clock in the morning shooting hoops. I hear them a lot, and they bring their friends from other towns. So, yeah, I'm just, I didn't know, maybe like a fence, would that even be feasible? Like just, you know, one of those courtesy fence so the balls wouldn't be constantly rolling back and forth between the two things?
Unless you get a tall fence, it's gonna go over.
Is it gonna go over?
Yeah, I mean, either way, basketball would go over it, I mean, it's just gonna, I mean
It's not like ping pong?
Well, so it'll be set times for the pickleball, and then just, you know, it's it's a recreational space.
Yep.
And so, you know, there's gonna be tons of other time to play basketball as well.
And you're saying it can happen simultaneously anyways, as it stands?
It could, um, you know, it's not necessarily a deal, but you you absolutely could play at both at the same time. It was just, you know, you'd have to watch out for it.
Yeah, so other way.
There's there's no other real sp- space for it.
Like, dude, you couldn't look somewhere else in the parking lot?
Well
Not that's, that's gotta be flat.
Here you're in a fire lane, here you're not flat, and then otherwise you're out there, which is all sorts of problems.
Yeah, so what is the school boards, the school boards are investing zero dollars into this?
This is, this is all rec department.
All rec department, and how much is the rec department investing in the setup of these two courts? Do you know roughly?
Uh it's probably gonna, between those two courts?
Yeah.
Under a thousand.
Under a thousand.
All in all, I think it's gonna be somewhere around two thousands.
Okay.
There's the lines, right?
Yeah, that's the main thing, it's the lines.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, if the community wants it, that we start out with it and see how it goes, and then um we address any issues and further, yeah?
Yeah.
Just make sure that everyone's like happy, you know, because
It's an absolute demand, I mean, not demand, but there is a demand
For it.
For it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the word. From our community. This is a, you know, community space, I think it's a very good thing to be doing.
Yeah, I think as long as it's managed well and doesn't affect the students, or, yeah, I think we'll be good.
Yeah, and um there's two selectmen that are involved, um very involved
In that.
Personally with it. The rec, it's got support from the rec department.
And Brendan, you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, as long as it's not interfering with kids put one who play basketball, that's that was the biggest thing for me, is because it's used, like you said.
Yeah.
Almost every day, so.
Yeah.
But it, I mean, it's not gonna be like all Saturday, though there'll be times when it's there, and there's just, it's gonna be repeatable times. So.
So rec department gonna give out lessons, or they gonna make clinics?
That is actually one, that is one discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm serious, because I I think it's such a, I'm a tennis player, but the the demand for it, but the learning for it is also of high demand, right? So how do you help people learn how to do it?
So the, when you when you say rec department, the people involved with pickleball are going to set up lessons. Nobody from the rec department has any idea how to play pickleball.
Well, oh, all right, well, I'm just saying, are there going to be lessons offered?
Yes, that is, is one of the things being discussed.
A lot of the people who signed up already played pickleball.
Gotcha.
And they had trouble getting court time. And it was quite expensive. It was like sometimes eighteen dollars each for court time. And Bob Magrello wanted it to be possible free, at least for the first year, to see how it all worked out. And then perhaps a small fee after that, just so that it was self-sustained.
Self-sustained.
And that's all I know, all I did was ask them to sign up.
Yep.
I know nothing else.
Yeah, and that that's that's spot on. The the rec department has funds available for this. It's it's a great thing for the community, so.
Yeah, reevaluate in a year.
Yeah, and the liability on that, where it's like an official league.
The the liability runs through the rec department, which is run through the town, so.
Okay, because I know we discussed that at the very beginning, but that's all been
Yeah, and we do actually have a waiver that, like, that when you sign up for basketball and everything.
Yeah.
You you sign a waiver associated with it, and then
Through the program.
We'd need to be, do the same thing for for this, anybody that's signed up, so. All right, so
Need a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve um the pickleball courts roughly as drawn. With the the one court closer to the fence and away from the entrance. And then the closer court next to the entrance not protruding out past the entrance. Do you get a second?
A second.
All in favor? All right. Okay. Approved. All right, um we have a non-public.
Before we go into non-public Yeah, so you wanted to thank Andy. And I I am, I know you're gonna send us a picture of this hanging up to my house. Right? So there's that, and then a little token of appreciation for your time serving on
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And um it has been a pleasure. And uh thank you for everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you both for
Do we have any more?
Continued. Oh yeah, do you have, do you have anything?
Yeah. This is very difficult to say, and, you know, I think you're all good people. But what's happened, what's been happening the last couple of months really made me unhappy, very, very. You know, I've gone over before the teacher's contract where they ratified in December the contract, and we couldn't get a hold of the contract until January twenty-third. Carriage time news ended second of February. No way could we get a communication out. If the teachers were able to ratify that contract, then that contract could, should have been readable to anybody. Anybody, any citizen, but you hid that until the twenty-third of January. Last month, I came here. I'm upset about the fact that the school was failing, that the majority of the kids are failing the proficiency test. I asked for the five-year plan. I was told I'd get it. I'm still waiting for it.
Uh the five-year I forgot to send you the the five-year facility plan.
What's that?
I forgot to send you the five-year facility plan. That that wasn't, keep in mind, that, I just wanna make sure
Election coming up tomorrow. I wanted the information before the election, so I could be a reformed voter.
Well, the five-year plan was not the education plan, that's a facility plan. Right?
I thought it was for education.
No, it's a five-year facility plan for the facilities, the the facilities that need to be
What kind of plan do we have for education?
That is the work of the Vision Summit that's coming up on the twenty-sixth of February, and that is that is work that's done at the SEU and then filters down with all stakeholders.
Okay, well, what plan is in effect now?
It's published on our website, and it was done years ago, so it's the SEU sixteen.
So it's not on the East Kingston website?
I don't, I don't if it's
See, these are the things, this is what makes me so
Well, there's an SEU sixteen website, so I
I realize that.
I imagine it's on that, because it's for all of SEU sixteen.
You know, again, for senior citizens to have to search the web, we don't have the training that all young people have. You're gonna make these things available. This is what's making me so unhappy. It's like I asked you for the policy on on snow cancellations. You said you'd get it to me, where is it?
I said, I, first of all, the, what you asked for was the New Hampshire state regs of school board governing procedures. And so if you want to send me a request in email, we can probably send that back to you. But we can take your feedback as a citizen, but this is a school board meeting held in public? This isn't a public meeting for us to have back and forths with your concerns.
I didn't want that, I just, you said that you would send it. That's, yeah, on the on the meeting last month.
So you want me to personally email you back the state regs on school board governance? Is what you're asking?
I wanted to know.
Because you asked for a specific policy that doesn't exist.
I had, I had asked, and I I believe, I I, the conversation was mostly with Principal French. I had asked, how does, how can people know in a situation where school is closed and there are gonna be a school board meeting that day? How do we know? How can we get that information?
Those are two different things. School being closed does not impact whether or not a school board meeting happens. If a school board meeting is canceled, that would be posted at the doors. Otherwise, assume it is happening.
How do we get real time out?
That's two different pieces.
Yeah, but it's posted on the doors. If we get two feet of snow, who's gonna come down here to check and see if it's on the door?
That is just how it happens in New Hampshire, Dr. Brandi. School being canceled does not cancel school board. The superintendent does not cancel school board meetings. The school board chair is in charge of scheduling and postponing or changing school board meetings. So the superintendent in the school is not responsible for that piece. We show up when they ask us to show up as an elected governing body. And as of now, most schools, if a school board meeting is canceled, there, if we can get a mass announcement out on the alert system, we will. We can post it on a website, we will, or we would put it on the door. But if there's no notice, then assume the school board meeting is happening at its regular time. No news means it is happening, that the board has not changed the meeting of the school board.
All I know is I asked for information, and you said you'd send me the policy last month, that's all I
Do you want to address like the proficiency, like what our academic plan is? As far as like the proficiency scores, did you want to address that, or?
The the academic plan is what we've been talking about since August with our work with our new curriculum director, Jill Vazir. And um
And we are still above the state average.
Reviewing the data at at our at our meetings three times a year. I mean, all of that has been talked about. There's no five-year plan like there is with the facilities plan.
Yeah, well, essentially, yeah, I think it's not like necessarily a written plan. I would be fine with having something more solid in writing um as a side, but I think that technically there is a three-to-five-year plan to move us forward, like in the proficiency, and that plan's already been started for a couple of years now. And I think that we're holding steady, and I think what you're gonna see when we do our state testing again is that you're gonna see a bump in our scores. Because what we're reflecting here, um what the students are doing now, is going to translate into the state testing scores being higher, because those internal like audits that we're doing, academic audits, are those are geared towards state testing, so it should trend the same between all areas. But we won't have those results back. Yeah, yeah, we won't have those
I wouldn't be here if I didn't care
Right.
About the school, I wouldn't come every month, I'm not
Yeah.
You know, and that's why I started the conversation by saying, this is very difficult for me, and it was very difficult to start there.
Yeah, I I think that
When you feel like, you know, the facts have been hidden from you. And and they, especially the thing with with the teacher's contract, because that violates DEIJ. There was no inclusion, there was no equity, and there was no justice. And now we've got an election tomorrow.
Yeah, I would
And just, I just want to remind you, but again, what the citizens vote on is the bottom line, the budget number. The citizens do not vote on a single word within the collective bargaining agreement. It is voting for the amount of money taxpayers' money would go towards that contract if it was agreed. And it was not done in one big document, again, it was done in a paragraph here on one sheet with track changes. Paragraph here on one sheet and track changes. So when the school teachers ratified it, they had no one document that they were looking at. They were saying Article Five, Paragraph Seven, Section C, we've changed these words. And that's all they saw, with the changes, what it was, crushed out what was it. So the track changes and the editing of creating one doc took time between our Director of HR and the NEA representative that worked with them. Andy didn't have a whole document, I didn't have a whole document, there was no whole document. The board got the bulletins of changes in The board got the bulletins of changes in, in the thing. It was literally a bulleted list that was in a board packet of what was changed in the collective bargaining agreement. That was it, so-
You need to start months ahead of time.
That's not how it works in New Hampshire law. They give you the windows for when you open negotiations, when you have to be done or when you have to request a mediator or when you have to go pass mediation. It is not dates we choose personally. It is governed by the labor laws in New Hampshire. It is not a personal decision by Andy.
You wanna send me those laws or?
How, you want me to make you a paper packet and leave it in the front office for you to pick up? Email me a list of what you would request and I will get you a paper packet together. Cuz I don't know how to give you this information, it's all online. So if you wanna give me a list of what you want, I can make a paper packet and get it to you, if that might be the easiest thing. But I'll need a list.
I just want to comment on, on the, that we just, as long as we just voted on the total package.
Yes, that is what you're voting on in your Warren article.
Yeah, because that seems strangely that we wouldn't know the content. In particular, if we just voted on the end result.
You don't approve the content of the collective bargaining agreement. The board chair negotiates in good faith with the collective bargaining agreement per New Hampshire regs, laws, labor laws. You do not approve that negotiation or what is in that, you approve how much it's going to cost. That is why you have an elected governing board to do that work. The collective bargaining agreement, teachers are not negotiating with every citizen. They're negotiating in good faith with Andy or whoever the school board chair is. And he negotiates the words with legal advice and the Director of HR. And then they say, this is how much it will cost the taxpayers. Will you approve this amount or no? That's what your right as a voting citizen is. That's, you approve the budget. You don't approve collective bargaining agreements, the content. It is confusing, but that, that's what it is. And the law says he has to be able to negotiate in good faith, which means what he says and what the board says in that, what they negotiate, cuz sometimes it's a couple members of the board, depending on how big your school board is, they have to be able to negotiate in good faith, meaning his word matters. If he says, I agree, I'm gonna sign off, it's a TA-ing, I'm gonna TA this article, he has to have the authority to say that.
What's TA?
It's a temporary agreement until everything's ratified.
Temporary.
Yeah. But if, if he, if the voters all have a say in it, there's no authority to negotiate. And he can't, he can't, he, he couldn't do anything. So that's why the laws are the way that they are. You have to have someone with the authority to negotiate.
And I reached out, like before the buzz, budget presentation, I reached out a few times to Renee to say like, where are we with this document? Like, can we get it, like, cuz I wanted, I wanted it as soon as possible too. And she got right back to me and she reached out to HR and told me the process and it just wasn't finished. And as soon as we got it, it went out.
Went out.
And unfortunately, it was, you know, it was when it was, but that's the soonest we could post it.
The teachers did not have it, they just had the little wording changes.
Yeah, they had, they had what we had, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and just like us, they have one rep, right? They don't have, it's not a bunch of teachers in it, like, it's not all the teachers doing it. They have one representation, just like-
And they, they had a couple because of, um, one person has been doing it for years and it was training two more that sat and watched. Training the newer teachers on how to negotiate in the future, but that was why they had extra.
The teachers have a highly paid professional person negotiating. The NEA probably sent somebody now, right?
They sent a representative from the NEA and we had a representative from the HR and we had legal advice and we had business. So it was, it was equal. To, it was equal, we could access counsel anytime we wanted. There was, and he had, Andy had a legal question, he could get the answer. And their, their representative was not a lawyer, it was a member, it's just on their list, their, their agency rep from the NEA. So it was pretty equal.
Yeah, um, again, we went over the timeline and the deliberative, I stand by as much as we could.
I have no ill feeling towards anybody here, okay? I think you knew before I came in here tonight that if I have something on my mind, I am not gonna hesitate to say it. And I said it because I think it, it may help in the future. So I don't want anybody here to think that there's animosity here. I just did not like the way things have occurred over the last few months and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Has there ever been, I guess this is coming out of community engagement, has there ever been any outreach for helping seniors with the internet access?
Yeah, yeah, last year we did a, we did a session here.
And how many people showed up to that?
We did, there wasn't, there wasn't many.
I think it was four or five total, some amount of them.
Okay, so I guess that's my question, like, do you feel like, so it's one thing to have the outreach and to have the opportunity, but it's another thing to actually engage in the opportunity, right?
Yeah, and, and the trouble is, when you're our age, you know, you see something, you think, oh, I can do that.
That's good, yeah.
And then the next day, they walk out, hell is that, you know? You just can't retain it.
The real problem is that we're not working with it every day, all day long. So you learn how to do something, you don't do it for four months and you go, what did I do?
That's exactly right.
I have found the library's been, been good, especially with, who's the new?
Zoe.
No, uh-
Sherry.
Sherry, okay? I've had a couple times where I've gone to her and I've asked her about classes and she said, you know, everybody's at such a different level, it really doesn't work that well. And she said, anytime you have a question, let me know. And she's helped me out several times. So that's why I haven't come back here, because we didn't get much of a turnout. I was in California, you know, grandkids, so I, I didn't attend, but I obviously would have.
Well, it's just something to noodle over, that's all, like, we're, we're-
It's just, that's why, for us, people like us, to me, I'm better off with printed material. You know, and I don't even like reading things on the computer because it's not something I'm used to, I am a paper person, you know? It's just old age.
Yep.
Yep.
And we try to be active in the community and sometimes you just feel like, people just think you're in the way, you know? But we're not because we do, surprisingly enough, we do support the schools and we do support activities in the community because it's good for all of us. But it's just, sometimes we just have problems with, with the communication part.
Well, like I said, it's just, it's something for us to, to think about, right? And, and noodle over, so.
Well, what if we, where you're saying you're using the library's resource and they're good there, what if we had like a school board, like resource area, you know, just a little spot in the library that had like documents that stayed there that you could just review and put back? Like, what if we had the CBA there? Or like the proposed, you know, the full CBA that's passed and the proposed CBA?
That would be great, actually.
And maybe like the minutes, all of the minutes can be filed there. Cuz we could email, one of us could easily email that over to the, to the library. Then they could print it out and then- Yeah, then they could print it out and then that way, if you missed a meeting, instead of having to go online, you just go into the library when you're in there and just read the minutes. We could start with minutes and definitely the CBA, cuz I mean, that's, you know, a thirty-page document. And then that way, you can just look at it anytime.
That, that's a brilliant idea.
Can the, can the CBA be just open at that point?
Yeah, it's-
Once it's-
It's published now.
It's published now, okay.
On websites and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that, to create a bulletin board or a little corner with that information.
I'm thinking just like, you know, a little-
Even we can put all the SEU sixteen school board policies in a binder too.
Yeah, we could do that.
Cuz what they're, all we do is gotta print them.
Yeah.
And then organize them.
Obviously, can we start it with the CBA and the minutes and then-
We have some work.
You sure there's enough room in the library for that?
I don't know, maybe not.
I mean, if, if policies are, if policies are in interest too, then we could get those all printed out and put them over there too.
No, and I think the library would be, yeah, very helpful.
Yeah, and then just, yeah, we could highlight, highlight it somehow to let people know that it's there. And then that way, at your own leisure, you just look at it and just put it back. Maybe she could put it in like a laminated sleeve or something, I'm not sure, just so people-
Well, actually, they've started this, I don't mean the whole world. They've started this summer social that's gonna be every three months. It's for people in town who are over fifty-five particularly. It's like a coffee morning and a get-together. For anybody, you know, in town. And so that would be nice to sort of introduce that. As, as something that's available, so.
Cool.
Anything else? Okay, um, duh, 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 duh.
A rule call vote to go in public under I.
Alright, let me-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, make a motion to go into non-public per RSA ninety-one eight-three-two, section I.
I'll second.
All in favor, Andy?
Tiffany?
Kirsten.
Soon as we hit the button, we are in non-public. Alright, uh, we are out of non-public and I will call the meeting to an end at six forty-seven PM.